Good Tuesday evening to everyone that is here with us and for those watching at home. The June 8, 2021 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. Vice Chair King, would you please read our commitment statement?
I sure can. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, in the legacy of success.
Thank you, Vice Chair King. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the evening, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board's secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call a roll.
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
If everyone would please ride while I lead us in the pledge. The pledge of allegiance.
...to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Kerry Cook, Coordinator 2 of Custodial Services, will be coming forward now to introduce the individuals to be recognized.
I want to thank the board, Superintendent, for having us today. We're here today to recognize three of our custodians that have the longest tenure. In a minute, I'll introduce each one of them, tell you a little bit about them, where they started at, and how many years they have with us. It's really amazing to see actually people that's worked over 30 years in the system nowadays. Actually, each of those started out as a sub custodian back in the day, so each of them has actually over 30 years. The first year as a sub custodian, until they had a position available, they worked as a sub, then they moved in, and they didn't count that out for FRS, so they actually have more than 30 years. Like I said, each of them's in the FRS. I'm gonna miss them when they are gone. Some of them, I got a few years left with. All three of them are what we consider master custodians. They've been through the Florida Plant Managers Association's training, and they do an outstanding job. Without them, I wouldn't be here today. There are three schools that they run I don't have to worry about. I think they've seen everything in their 30 years, so anything I throw at them, it's really not a big deal. They just handle it and go on. Start out, I'm not gonna say old, but the one with the longest tenure, Trimedia Jones, she's got 34 years with us.
Wow.
She started back in 1985.
When she was three years old.
Actually, she's probably my age. She started out at Shady Hill Elementary as custodian. She moved up to a Head 1 at Shady Hill, worked at Fort King as a Head 2, and she's finishing up at Vanguard as a Head 2. Not only, she's a graduate, actually, of Forest High School, so it's kinda awkward that she's working for Vanguard. Not only does she do Vanguard, she also does the CDL program for me out there at Booster. She does it herself. She also does the Phoenix Center for us, which has added on to us. The next one I'd like to introduce is Angel. Angel, Angel, sorry about that if I messed up. He's got 30 years. He's actually married to Daisy, who's my coordinator for custodial, one of them. Angel's got 30 years with us. He started in 1990. Started out at Lakewood Middle as a custodian, worked at Sunrise Elementary as a Head 1, and back in the days when money was tight, 2010, I think, he ran Bellevue Middle and Bellevue High. So if you can actually do that, that's a lot on one person's plate. Now we have him back at Bellevue High School. The next one is Luanda McCray. We call her Nisi. She's got 30 years with us. She actually lives in Coleman, so we kinda keep her on the south end of the county, because I think it's about a 45-minute drive, right?
Yeah.
Okay, she started out at Lakewood Middle School as custodian, went to Lakewood High School as a custodian, worked at Emerald Shores as a custodian. She got promoted, went to Harborview Elementary as a Head 1. We moved over to Bellevue for a little while as a Head 1, and we needed her at Stanton Weersdale, where she is now as a Head 1.
Oh, my goodness. Let's get it up. We definitely want to hear from you, and we have a couple things to say as well. Yes, sorry. We don't ever want anyone to feel intimidated, although it is a little strange to be on that side of the dais, and we understand that, but on behalf of the whole board, we just want to congratulate you and thank you for your commitment and your passion for making our facilities the places that they are, safe and clean for our staff and our children to be able to come to school every day. And Trimedia and Angel and Luanda, I know you're standing up here representing all of the custodians, and all of them deserve that standing ovation was for the three of you for just hanging in there all these years, but also for every single one of your staff members. And Kerry, it was so nice of you to bring them today, and it really means a lot to see the folks in the field and in the trenches are doing the work.
Thank you.
Let's get a picture.
Yes, definitely want a picture, and this'll be your time to say some words, too. Gotta have some words of wisdom after 30 years.
Well, I'm a big mouth. I'd just like to say thank y'all very much for giving us the opportunity to do this. A lot of my inspiration was I had my own children, and I just want to make sure that my children were safe, and then, God, woe and behold, God blessed me with grans and now great grans. So I won't be here for my great grand, so don't even worry about that, okay? But it just has been a journey for me, and I thank God for the many people that I've met along the way, and I'll like to just say thank you, because I can say many, many, many things, and I'm still thankful. I thank God for just these wonderful years that I have had, and even though I'm not gone yet, I begin to feel the bittersweet of being here but yet leaving, so it's gonna be kinda hard, making that transition, no thank you.
What is your retirement date, Pam?
August the 31st, 2023.
Oh, so by that time, one of the grans may be old enough, and you could train them up.
I have some.
At least for the summer or something?
I do have some old enough. They are in their twenties.
That's hard to imagine.
And for the record, Trimedia and I grew up on the same block.
Yes, we did.
A little older than me, but little older. Just another little older.
All right, I see where this is going. Thank you so much for just everything. I'm glad that you spoke, and how about Mr. Angel over there?
Yeah, I would like to say, you know, we, working here, it's a very important experience for us because we want to do this for the kids. We, too, want to think about whatever was done for us, and the most things that if we're taking care of them, they will be our future. So that's what made us do what we do, and we work all as a team to make this whole operation come along, you know, and thank you.
Yes, thank you. You're great role models for kids.
All I want to say is thanks, and it's an honor to be here.
She's been smiling since she came in.
That's all I do.
That's right, Miss Nisi, it's great to have you here.
Thank you.
All right, take it.
Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Now, I guess we have to get down to business. Superintendent Gullett.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board, always hard to follow, great employees. I recommend approval of the agenda for the June 8, 2021, School Board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Go move.
Seconded by Cummings, seconded by Vice Chair King.
Campbell.
Oh, I'm sorry, seconded by Board Member Campbell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the April 13, 2021, School Board meeting?
Moved.
Moved by Vice Chair King.
Seconded.
Seconded by Board Member Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the April 22, 2021 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell. Seconded by Vice Chair King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on now to persons requesting to address the board. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight. Good evening, Attorney Powers.
Good evening, Chair Thrower. I will, in compliance with Section 286.014114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board's secretary. Importantly, before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice, as I have here, to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. According to Florida Statute 1001.372, removal of persons interfering with meetings, the presiding officer of any district school board may order the removal from a public meeting held by the district school board of any person interfering with the expeditious or orderly process of such meeting, provided such officer has first issued a warning that continued interference with the orderly process of the meeting will result in removal. Any law enforcement authority or a sergeant-at-arms designated by the officer, Chair Thrower, shall remove any person ordered removed pursuant to this subsection. Verbal tax and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify themselves, I'm sorry, not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless their statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. The board may or may not choose to respond to those comments. You may be directed to an administrator staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Chair Thrower, that concludes my explanatory remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez Lopez, do we have any speakers tonight?
Two speakers. Mr. David Serdar.
David Serdar, 66 Winter Green Drive, Brooklyn Park, Florida, 34731. I am a public commenter.
Say your last name, sir.
S-E-R-D-A-R. You pronounce it right, S-I-R. You know, my wife and I are retired Florists, but I was a certified commercial cleaner. I worked at Leesburg High School. I got a bottle bill from the government. My dad was a principal at an elementary school, died on Flag Day. Taught me respecting values that I walk with. The black neighborhoods in North Chicago, he lived across the street from the Great Lakes Navy Base, the last boot camp in the United States. And I'm part of the anonymous association, I don't drink, but a bottle bill is the barcode right there. I'm trying to get a bottle bill for our kids' future. In Hawaii, New York, Michigan has had it for 30 years, not Hawaii, but there's other states that have it. You put it in a machine, the kids get, you wouldn't see it in the streets. My dad and my mother just turned 93, May 1. Dad died two years ago on Flag Day. You know, on the back of my shirt, we have a new program, Keep Lake Beautiful. I don't know if Marion Scott has got it, but I got the Marion County pin on me, and I public comment in front of Jeff Gold and Kathy Bryant, when she was the chairman. You know, there's fish internments. Kids can learn to fish. We gotta pray for Florida, we gotta pray for America. There are, Representative Brett Haig just called me, you know, up here we have Stan McClain, a representative. Well, his hard-working son, Matt McClain, 35, 40-years-old, he just got his third child or his second child, he's Senator Maxey's hard-working aide in Lake Lake. You know, and are you aware there's a listening tour for the K-12 high schools that started in Miami last week? The audio and the video didn't work, but on 6-3, Osceola County, 6-9 tomorrow, Baker County, where there is a listening tour for citizens to go. You know, there is a, I don't know if you're aware, there is a Webster Hall, a room they have the most important meetings at in the St. Capitol. In the fall coming up, there's gonna be more committee meetings, intern committee meetings, these are passes to be in. I had over 35, I don't carry them all with me. You know, I go down to Orlando, with Cory Burns and I, City Councilman, Ron Martin was the king dad, we picked up trash. My dad's most important person in his school was Helen, the custodian. You know, cleanliness is God-given. If it's not ready for the students, my sister just retired, she just turned 70, but my name's Serdar. You know Jackie Kittle, well, my dad, that's him right there. My mother is still alive. My nephews and nieces, they're young, they're 35, 36, they sail all over the world, a little harbor out of Waukegan, Illinois, which is the county seat of Lake County, Illinois. I've been down here for years, Pinellas County, my grandparents. Well, my mother was a key puncher at having lavatories. And you do things right, my mom had a list. If you didn't do it right, you didn't get your car keys. I should have been a teacher, but I do go to school board meetings, I'm honored to be, I just was at your sheriff's office, Deidre Joyner, the secretary for Robert Douglas, who ran against Billy Woods. You know, well, she just gave me her card again. I was in the, you know, to find Florida, there are a lot of literature for kids in Tallahassee. You can go there, you could do things right. I'm trying to get better protection at gas stations, so cigarettes are cell phones. Ever see somebody smoke a cigarette at a gas station? It's not the fumes, it's the fumes, it's not the gas. You know why they got it? I'm trying to get a trash bag in every car. One of the other counties has it in Florida, Sheriff Farver, the second oldest sheriff to term with it. You know, you run for office, I've run for office. I've run at the Green Party candidate. I haven't stopped. You know, you never, never, never give up. Things may go bad, but our kids, I worked at Leesburg High School as a custodian when I moved down here. I was a probation officer, a probationary employee. You know, it's an honor to be in front of the chairman of Lake County School Board is Bill Mathias. School board member of the state of Florida a couple years ago, and we're not turning them into it. His head of security is Mark Palmer, a federal marshal. There's a lot of problems.
You have one minute remaining.
And I want you to know, well, I go to Sarasota because Fiona McFarland, District 72, had given me t-shirts, because I have met the Senate President, Walton Simpson, I have met Christopher Als, the House Speaker, on January 13. Anybody can go to these meetings, hardly anybody goes. They're basically empty in the St. Capitol, because I got pictures, Anna Maria Rodriguez. I even had a state, a senate base pass given to me from Kathy Miras, Chief of Staff of the Senate President, who's been the chief of staff, she was an FSU grad, 4.0, come up, I can't even say it, sorority girl, but she was the chief of staff for a couple Senate Presidents and Congress to Daniel Wester, when he was Speaker of the House, the first Republican in 122 years. But I go down to Sarasota, and what the kids are looking at in the future, they're worried about their environment. You know, I'm an old fart, I'm gonna die. They win awards. In Lake County the other day, a little boy got $25 for toilet trouble.
Your time has expired.
I thank you so much for your time, your concern for your children. God bless you.
God bless you, too. Thank you for your advocacy and your activism, sir.
Ms. Vicki Truleeb?
My name is Vicki Truleeb, T-R-E-U-L-I-E-B. I reside at 4700 Southeast 33rd Avenue of Cali, Florida, 34480. I'm coming here tonight because it's easy to always complain about various things, and I'm always the one on the front line saying, this is wrong, let's fix it, and I've come before you many times for that, but tonight I wanted to come before you and tell you thank you for the past year. When we started the year, it was topsy-turvy, and nobody knew what it was going to be like, and then look at where we're at now. We didn't think we would get here. There were tons of jokes about when the schools were going to shut down because of COVID taking over, and fortunately, that didn't happen. But we got to see the kids, and we got to work with the kids, and grow with the kids, and do amazing things, and it wouldn't have been possible if we didn't go back to school. The things that I want to say is thank you so much for listening to the employees at the beginning of the school year, and making sure that not only the students were safe, but that we were also safe in our classrooms and getting things done. And I wish you the best, and I hope you have a happy summer, and I'm looking forward to a great next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Truleeb. Since you're here, I was going to say this until the end, and I didn't know you were coming, as part of my comments tonight, I was going to mention The Paw Print, which is Forest High School's literary magazine, and Ms. Truleeb has been doing this, I think, for five years at least?
Yeah, I think so. Well, this would have been the sixth year, but we didn't do it last year because COVID, so yeah.
Right, okay, all right. And it is a compilation of student writing and artwork, and it features the art of over and writing of over 40 students, and it's been recognized numerous times by the National Council of Teachers of English, and is one of the only, if not the only, student literary magazines in Marion County. So I really appreciate you sending us a copy every year, and I enjoy reading it, and the hard work that the students put in, and just the depths of their feelings are always revealed in poetry and the written word, so thank you for everything that you do, Ms. Truleeb, and thanks for hanging in there with us.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to adopt the O'Callie Charter High School contract?
Move.
Seconded by Board Member Cummings, seconded by Vice Chair King. Superintendent Gullett?
Madam Chair, the contract for O'Callie Charter High School complies with board policy and Florida statutes.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the contract for O'Callie Charter High School? Seeing none, any discussion board? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items, C-7.1 through C-20.1?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell.
Seconded.
Seconded by Vice Chair King. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, like sign. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $70,634.50, which includes $1,000 to Bellevue Middle School from Marion Soil and Water Conservation District, $1,000 to Donellen High School from Marion Soil and Water Conservation District, $1,000 to Forest High School from Big D Roofing Services, Vertigo Towers Automated Injector Board and Installation valued at $3,500 to Fort King Middle School from the Marion County Hospital District, $1,000 to Fort McCoy School from Marston Lodge, 49F, NAM, $7,734.50 to Lakewood High School from Lakewood High School Hurricane Kickoff Booster Club, two Stryker Power Pro XT Stretchers with Chargers, one Stryker MX Pro Stretcher, and one ambulance body valued at $14,600 to Lakewood High School from Leopard Medical Transport LLC, modular robotics cubicles, Robot Blocks Code and Construct Educator Park, STEM Education and Coding Robot valued at $1,905 to Madison Street Elementary from DonorsChoose.org, $1,000 to Marion Technical College from 121 AVN Association Incorporated, and finally, biotech classroom materials valued at $37,895 to North Marion High School from Chiflin Middle High School. May I have a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell. Seconded by Board Member Cummings. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Board Member Cummings, would you please give our thanks tonight?
As always, we want to thank all of the generosity that's shown to our school district. Every board meeting, we see that the community continues to support this school district and the various schools with their generous donations, so again, we thank them, and please keep up with the donations.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. Moving on to board committee reports and concerns. A few reminders, the following Administrative Briefing and Work Session is scheduled for June 17, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss COVID-19 updates if needed, school planning update, best standards discussion, final review contract, Macintosh referendum options, and MTI/MTC relocation options. The next Administrative Briefing and Work Session that was scheduled for July 8, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. has been canceled. Okay, and moving on to committee reports, concerns, and comments, we'll start with you, Dr. Gullett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, again, good evening, and I want to say thank you and congratulations to everyone who helped support our graduates so proudly walked across the stage last week. We had great ceremonies. Thank you to everyone who helped them get there, all of the wonderful staff that were recognized, families and support. High school teams did a great job, and I also want to thank our partners in the community, such as the sheriff's office, for having great security out there and helping, especially at the World Equestrian Center, so we had great partners at work. And thank you all for your presence. It was wonderful to have a board member represented at each of our graduations. It was wonderful to have a board member represented at each of our graduations. I know that meant a great deal to our principals and their team and to the students. So thank you for representing our school board. I do have one other item, I would like to seek a direction, if I may, from you. We have to address the prior Evergreen Elementary attendance zone. And so I need to see what the pleasure of the board is in addressing that so that when students come and register, we can let them know what zone they would be in. Of course, choice still continues to be an option, but for transportation purposes, we need to address the prior zone. So I wanted to seek direction on whether you would like that at an upcoming work session, which is not already an agenda item. I do believe that July 22nd, which is the next work session, is a bit late. So if we could do something sooner, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
I agree that certainly. Can we go ahead and add it to the 17th then? Is that?
We certainly can if the board's prepared to do that.
Is that too far away?
No.
That's next Thursday.
So someone else would have to present that? Okay. Otherwise, July 22nd is too late. Yep.
So do we need to have a special work session?
How do you feel about that, Mr. Ayers? Are you prepared to have someone ready for us on June 17th so we can get right to it? Or would you prefer to?
I can have someone, obviously I prefer to be here myself.
Okay.
For that. And again, we need to, we need to communicate to the families.
Quickly.
Let them know and quick.
We can designate a special work session if need be, that just to address this particular issue if we need to, so.
That would be, obviously it's the board's pleasure, but I would much rather be here.
And I think it's likely all of our preferences to have you be the one because that's your forte and we appreciate it.
And I know Ms. Campbell's not gonna be here.
On the 17th, right. Okay, right. Okay, so what would be the soonest that we could do it in terms of noticing and that type of thing?
If we're gonna make it a special work session, then, you know, we will definitely advertise it on the website and then I'll go ahead and advertise it out, it just won't be the full seven days because it is special.
Okay.
Could you do next Tuesday morning?
Next Tuesday morning?
I know I'm not available next week.
So you're not here the whole week?
Okay. And I'm participating in a summer institute on Tuesday and Wednesday from 9:00 to 3:30. But, you know, I could be a little late or leave a little early if I have to. Something like this is really important. And hate to have you miss, Board Member Campbell, but I think we still all are in agreement that we really need to have this and get it done. Okay, so what about Tuesday morning?
I know we have the leadership at Westport.
We do, we could, are you presenting that morning?
That morning? Yes.
The 22nd, you're presenting in the morning? Are we the 15th or the 22nd? I'm sorry, the 15th. I'd move to the 22nd.
Yeah, I'm presenting with Mr. Powers and so whenever Mr. Powers is presenting.
What time? Is the 22nd too late? Or are you available Friday, the 18th?
We don't.
Oh, that's right, we're closed.
I can be here on the 18th, no, no, the 18th, I'm not here.
The 22nd work?
22nd will work.
The Tuesday. Tuesday, the 22nd, let's do it.
We have to be here 9 o'clock.
9 o'clock?
Yeah, there's a board meeting that evening, correct?
Right. Do we want to try to do it right before the board meeting?
Right, when everybody's already here, that's fine.
That's fine. We do it at 4:30? Does that, an hour give us enough time?
I mean, I think an hour, we can present, but then we can talk options and stuff like that. So I think an hour should be sufficient.
Let's do four and then that way we're not rushed.
4 o'clock on the 22nd.
Okay.
Ms. Martinez Lopez, will you send out a calendar and write for that?
Yep. 4 o'clock on the 22nd, you got it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's not too late, right, that, that works?
No, that works.
Okay, all right. And Dr. Gullett, did you have?
That concludes my comments, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, Vice Chair King?
Yes, as Dr. Gullett spoke about graduation, I have to say it was a wonderful and proud moment to be at the World Equestrian Center. It was just so grand and, I mean, there was huge TV screens and everyone had great seating and fans and the stands for people, the parents and relatives and friends waiting. It was just a really nice experience. I have been hearing about summer school. I'm getting good reports, for the most part, elementary. I've heard that it's fun and it's like actually teaching how it was back in the day. So when I hear that, that kind of excites me to hear that there's true teacher teaching going on. And I also want to, it's the end of the school year, it's over, it's all behind us. And I do, again, I want to tell every one of our staff members, every single one of you and our students, thank you so much. I mentioned earlier that a lot was required and asked of each and every one of you guys and you guys delivered. And now that we are on the other side of it, as Ms. Trulieb said, you know, we are, you know, here and on the other side. And we couldn't have done any of this without you and your dedication. So again, I just want to send my sincere gratitude and thanks. And that's all I have for this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair King. And I, I have to piggyback on that because, you know, I do think that folks were almost taking bets on how many days it was gonna take before a school had to fully shut down at the beginning of the year. We were one of the few states that even attempted to open. We were one of the few counties that opened pretty much on time, giving our teachers an extra week to prepare. And yes, we had our quarantines, yes, we had our classroom shutdowns, but we did not have one school go offline. So if anyone wants to know what we accomplished this year, I think that that pretty much rises to the top. Our kids got the opportunity to have a face-to-face education. And so thank you, Ms. Trulieb, for your kind words, it's appreciated. I think that, you know, crisis brings people together too. And it can tear people apart, but we chose to come together. So thank you, Vice Chair King, for saying what you do. Okay, Board Member Cummings, we'll just go down the line.
Good evening again, everyone. Again, congratulations to our graduates of 2021. It was truly, all of the graduations were truly spectacular compared to what we've seen in the past and the locations and the pomp and circumstance that we saw. And for the record, Mr. Viennello, I'm not the cloud that brings the rain.
Did that always mean graduation?
Yes, it rained at Westport. And, but, but it was really a wonderful occasion because you got the chance to see these kids huddle together and make a difference and see that there's some unity in that class. And I think that this graduating class of 2021 has some great things in store for them. I feel sorry for, you know, the mortar boards all bent up and they look kind of like court gestures. But, but, but congratulations to that class. And then also I want to echo my colleagues. The, this year was a challenge. This year has, continues to be a challenge, but we were able to navigate through it and we still are going through it. And I just want to tell all those that worked so very hard to keep our schools as safe as possible and, and we, we were able to stay open. That was, that was a wonderful thing. And then for them to enjoy their summers, those that did not decide to work this summer. But to those that are working, thank you. Thank you for summer school because there's a group of people that just said, I'm gonna keep pressing on, keep pressing on. And they understood the significance of, of having a summer school this year for these kids because some really, really needed it for more, more reasons than others. It wasn't just always academic reasons why they needed summer school. Some need the socialization, some need the lesser restrictions. So, and we're just praying that they have a safe, safe summer. Please, please be safe, please do the right thing. And we look forward to seeing them all back here in August. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Cummings, Board Member Campbell?
And I'm gonna echo basically what all you guys have been saying about graduations. I think that they were spectacular. I was able to participate in two of them and we were able to keep the rain clouds at bay, Reverend Cummings. Actually, Principal Colleen Wade and I were like, look, that's the Lord. Like whenever you see it, and you would have to, Dr. Gullett probably could agree. The clouds were all around us everywhere, Mr. Viennello. They were all around, but it did not rain a drop, well, maybe one or two drops, but nothing significant. So it was amazing, the bands did terrific. That was something I don't believe the bands were able to participate last year, so the bands did a wonderful job. Forest High School Chorus sang the, the National Anthem. And so that, the seniors, graduating seniors within the corps. And so it was, it was just great, graduation was spectacular. I'm sure it was great at the Southeastern Livestock Pavilion as well. But World Equestrian Center just was a really great atmosphere and environment for everyone. And so kudos to all of our graduates, but also everybody that had a hand in making sure that that went off without a hitch, including our Sheriff's Office and all the folks at WEC to do the live streaming and as long as they use not copyrighted music, we're good to go with that. So I also wanted to say grateful for summer school. We were, I had to take one of my children out to Westport today because I also want to say kudos to all the athletes and coaches that are working on their craft this summer as well and all those that are doing the summer camps and things in all the various schools. But I was taking my son out to Westport just before this meeting and we were passing Saddlewood Elementary School. And he said, wow, are those kids still in school about 4 o'clock? I'm like, well, they're probably an extended day from summer school. So it was, it's just great to see that we've had a team come together to make sure that students are receiving extra support this summer and that, that helps families, that helps our students, that helps everybody involved. And so just thank you to everybody who's put in the extra work. Thank you to everyone who put in the work all year long. Again, echoing what my fellow board members have said, this has been a phenomenal year in a lot of ways. And whenever you think of all the things that we've overcome, what it looked like in July and what it looks like today and how we have been able to overcome. And I, I think that I'm just grateful beyond measure of the way that we've been able to handle that as a district. And all of, takes every person, every part, every child, every day. And the final thing I want to mention was just for a point of reference, that we did approve some additional job description updates tonight. And I know we had a large staffing plan revisions that all came through. And I'm grateful that we are putting in that hard work that is needed. It's an ongoing process, but we are making some significant changes in that regard that where these job descriptions are going to more closely align with what these folks are doing and how we'll be able to hire folks to do the jobs that need to be done based on updated job descriptions. And I know it's an ongoing process, Ms. Dobins and I spent probably an hour and a half together before this meeting tonight. And it's an ongoing conversation, but I'm just grateful that we're at this point and moving forward and there's a lot of exciting things in the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Campbell, Ms. Martinez Lopez?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, I covered all the bases, huh? Usually you have a reminder.
You're good.
I feel good. All right. Well, I rolled old school and went to the Vanguard graduation at the Ag Pavilion and that was their choice to stay in their, you know, home area. And it really was wonderful, it was so smooth, it wasn't even that hot out. There was a nice little magic breeze blowing. The kids, there was a different level of connection, I noticed, with, with the kids through the ceremony. They were looking at each other, you know, exchanging glances. You could tell that they felt like they had been, really been through something and experienced something even beyond the typical feeling of graduation. And I felt like that was just really noticeable and really special. It still gives me a little bit of a chill to think about it. And as always, our, our mounted posse did a great job, you know, with crowd control. And I think they were out at World Equestrian Center as, as well. I think they were into a part of traffic safety and just keeping the flow going. And everyone just seemed really relaxed and really, really enjoyed themselves. So it was definitely the culmination of and celebration of quite a year. And it was interesting that the gentleman came in tonight talking about littering and recycling because there was just an article in the paper the other day that Marion County is feeling the mess. And I noticed it too around town, maybe as we're growing and people are moving and, you know, things are being hauled around. I don't know if they're flying off trucks with the wind or what's going on. But it's everyone's responsibility, you know, to clean up. And, and I was thinking that if the county commission is wanting to bring this into the forefront, that maybe our school community can partner a little bit as well. We certainly have a lot of students that need volunteer hours. So it would be great to work on a partnership with the county commission and start getting some messaging out there. You know, at the elementary level, kids learn a lot about recycling and they do it in such cute ways and don't be a litter bug. But when our kids get a little bit older, some of them go through that phase where, you know, what's flicking this out the window really gonna do? And so I think it would just be good for community awareness and community pride. Now that the county commission has brought it up as initiative of theirs, maybe we can partner with them and, and make a difference. And we'll be able to tell if it's working because our streets will be cleaner. So it'll be easy to see. Thinking about our upcoming, we, we have done our textbook adoption and I think that the public in, in some ways deserves a little bit of reassurance that because we have these new standards coming out, that there's going to be a lot of professional development and training for our teachers that'll be ongoing. And also, we've chosen books from the state-approved list. So the governor has made a lot of statements about the importance of what his initiatives are and how schools want to dovetail that and, and reflect it. And so I think that it's important for our community to know that not only are we, we dedicated to having really good books in front of all kids. I remember the days when there were kids that didn't get the same books as every other kid did. And I'm glad to see that those days have come to an end. And I just wanted to put that out there tonight. Also, moving on to summer school, what was the last count? Does anyone know, have at least a ballpark figure? How many kids are?
Seven thousand.
I was thinking six, 7,000? Wow. Sometimes you have to chase them down to get them to come to school in the summer. But, but this year, they, they really want to be there, that is, that is awesome. And I know that getting them routed and getting them on the right buses and getting them home on the right bus is, is so critical. And, and we all know what our bus drivers really have had to deal with and, and keep coming to work all during the school year. And the fact that they have agreed to, to work summer school is, is a testament to them and, and their commitment to kids. I think there's even more reporting requirements this summer. You know, anytime you get money from the feds or anywhere else, it's never free. And there's always strings attached and there's reporting requirements and documentation. And I'm not sure how that has impacted our Transportation Department, but I bet it has because it's just such a big part of what we do. So I'd just like to acknowledge, as always, our, our Transportation Department. Finally, just for board members, we did get our Form 6, which is our financial disclosures. And that comes up fast and the deadline is July 1st. So just give you that little reminder. And other than that, I think I'll look forward to seeing all of you at the Florida School Boards Association State Conference and, and meeting this year, which was canceled last year. And now we get to all be together and I'm really looking forward to, to that reunion as well. It's really gonna feel like a reunion. And, and the networking and the professional development that, that we get from those types of connections is, is so valuable. So thank you again to everybody and for all that you do and for all of you that showed up tonight and for all of you that are there at home tuning in or will be because you can get it anytime on YouTube. All right, we will move on to student disciplinary matters, except I almost didn't remember to say Attorney Powers. Do you have anything for us tonight?
I have nothing this evening, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through May 19th, 2021. Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 21-070E, JD 21-071, JD 21-072, JD 21-074, JD 21-075 and JD 21-076 with educational services through the remainder of the 2020, 2021 school year and the entire 2021, 2022 school year? May I have a motion? It's amended. Moved by Vice Chair King.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Cummings. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. I know kids need to be responsible for their own behavior, but this is always, for me, the worst part of the meeting. All right, though there being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
A move.
Moved by Board Member Cummings, seconded by Board Member Campbell.